Yeah, I'm here to listen tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled June 17th, 2024 city council meeting. As you come in tonight, which would be to my right, to everyone else's left in the audience, there's a set of double doors you'll walk through. You go through those doors, on your right, there's a desk, on that desk, there's a sign-in sheet. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilperson Morrissey, Palladino, Pratt, Sharp, Soha, Stuccio, Veer, Wolfram, Mayor Stockford.
Present.
We have eight present mayor.
Thank you, Katie. Councilman Soha did get in touch with myself and with Dave, and he is dealing with some family business tonight, so he will not be present. We'll move into approval of agenda. City Manager, any members of council have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Veer to approve the agenda as written. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it, we've got an agenda. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium, and remember, this is public comment on agenda items only, so if you're going to comment during this particular period, make sure it has a direct tie to something that's present on the agenda tonight. Podium is now open.
Thank you. Dennis Lee Scott from Huesel here, Universal Celtic Ministries, and you have to apologize if I feel a little shaky. I just fell out, fell down outside, so, but we'll continue on. In reference to the homeless, some of the things that you have mentioned was about the walk-in center and the warming center. Two of the places that I personally have helped out and worked in a little bit, and, you know, considering them to be a a place for homeless to hang out and place to do things, that might be true in certain spots because that's the only place they have to go. But if you keep doing things to help get rid of the homeless, at the same time, you're going to end up spending more tax dollars on different things, and these tax dollars are flow downhill back to the landowners. The landowners that are renting places have to rent, charge higher rent. The higher rent that goes up, more homeless people we're going to have because they can't afford to pay the high prices of rent. I know only a few here probably remember back in the days when we only paid maybe a hundred, hundred and twenty dollars a month for rent. Now they're paying a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars a month for rent. And, you know, that's a heck of a jump in my lifetime to see rent and stuff go up. One of the things I wanted to talk about was the drop-in center. My wife and I, through Universal Celtic Ministries, have helped different ones from that area. We've helped people to get out of there where they didn't have to go back there for help and stuff. They turned around and they now have jobs. They're productive people that, you know, I won't say names, but I do know, as a matter of fact, I checked on one a few weeks ago, it moved up to Jackson. And she's working and she's got a place of her own and she's doing very well, and she used to be a regular one at the drop-in center. The homeless, how many, you know, I don't know if any of you really go down and see the warming center or not, and how clean the place is and how the place is taken care of, and where the people that are homeless can come in, get a good night's rest, have a place to wash their clothes, take a shower and clean up. You know, if we did anything against them, where else would people go? Go back to your backyards and grab your hose and maybe wash themselves down, or go out to the lake and wash out there or whatever. It don't matter. The money, the money is the thing. We have a lot of people that forget that the Bible says, when you've done it unto the least of these, you've done it unto me. And if we don't turn around and start realizing these are human beings, that they breathe air the same as we do, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be around them and breathe their air, but they're here. And as godly people, we're to be able to help and strengthen these people at any time that we can. And it's not good for us to do these things. Even as you sit here in council meetings, and I go to some of the meetings I go to, you know, I'm being judged by how I turn around and do the things for the people of that community or wherever it is, and that's the same way you guys are. You're voted in by the people and you in turn are responsible for these lives that they're going around to. We in turn turn around and, I guess I got that one, but the taxes, that's one of the biggest things. If we keep raising taxes, you know, eventually some of us could end up getting, being in trouble because the taxes keep going up higher and things keep coming up. And it's time that we, as human beings, start looking at these things together. Working together, not necessarily trying to get rid of problems, but creating more problems as you're trying to get rid of the little problems. So, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any more public comment regarding agenda items only?
Ted Jansen, Warnerford Hillsdale Street. Looking at this report, on the fourth page, it talks about drug addiction, economic problems, and collapse of the American family. Are there leading causes of homelessness? Somehow it misses the one leading cause. In fact, the leading cause is lack of housing. That's the leading cause of homelessness. These others may contribute to homelessness, but to just avoid that is ridiculous. And I know that some on council have said they're against any further public housing creation in the city. There's also a mistake on this report talking about during winter time, sure, the warmth shelter is the only available shelter during the winter. Hillsdale Community Thrift operates year-round. Right now, they have twenty residents in their facility. But the most distressing is the solution to this is strengthen law and arrest them. Put them in jail. Well, apparently there was a lack of research by this PhD student that the Western Conference of Police Chiefs' number one recommendation was not to enforce laws to put them to jail, is to increase housing and other social services. And the proposal here is, is to build a bigger jail. I mean, Mr. Ingles can tell you the problem with that. Problem, they've talked to him, it's a thousand dollars a square foot. But then, hey, look at the money from LifeWays. LifeWays has over a hundred million dollars. We'll just have them say, hey, state, we're going to take that money you gave us and spend some of it on a jail instead. Even though these funds are mandated specifically for mental health services, we can just ignore that. Or with the milage. Apparently, Mr. Limicott does not understand that the milage was voted on not only by the people of Hillsdale, but by all the people of Hillsdale County, the other eighty percent. And the milage was to help those who fall in between Medicaid and being employed where their employers provide mental health insurance. It's to provide mental health for those who fall in that crack, that they make no money because they're on social security or whatever, so that's, you know, that's in Medicaid, or they make a lot of money, like you guys. You guys have health insurance, but those who work at Burger King who don't have health insurance. That is what the milage is for, is to provide them ability to have mental health services. And to say, well, you know what, we can just take this millage and just change it. Well, apparently, once a PhD student doesn't know how the system works in government, just can't take the millage and say, we're going to just do something else with it. The whole thing, what we need to do is to address the housing issue and not to throw them in jail. Because what's, I mean, that's a real quick fix, but then we have no jail to put them, start with. In fact, putting them in jail will cost them more than providing them housing. So let's be realistic and look at this issue. I know they don't want to see these homeless walking down Hillsdale Street. They walked past my house. I know that one of my neighbors is affiliated with the committee. She doesn't want her children to see the poor homeless people who may attack them, which is just a great falsehood that has been perpetrated. We need to just address this issue. Just, what are we going to do? Provide housing for them. The ministry is doing a lot to connect them to social services. There was a statement here about the girl that was trafficked by her stepdad, I believe was. Well, Hillsdale Community Thrift did a lot for her. She's longer in Hillsdale. She's in a placement somewhere else in the state, getting, it might have been substance abuse treatment, getting training to become a functional human being, where she will not fall into this trap again. And that's what we need to do, rather than say, oh, let's put them in jail. Out of sight, out of mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Any more public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close the podium. We'll move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and BPU claims of May 30th, payroll of June 6th, we've got city council minutes of June 3rd, our last meeting, finance minutes of June 3rd, operations and governance minutes of May 30th, BPU renew Microsoft software assurance licensing, BPU renew Milsoft licensing, BPU cumation Avina SCADA licensing maintenance agreement, Board of Public Utilities Carlton Lift Station bypass pump, Board of Public Utilities Carlton Lift Station upgrade, Board of Public Utilities Carlton Lift Station standby generator, and Board of Public Utilities trim remove vegetations Markris bid. Is there any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, supported by Councilman Veer. May I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilperson Palladino, Pratt, Sharp, Stuccio, Veer, Wolfram, Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey. Eight zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we will move into communications petitions. Item A is just a code enforcement report, summer liens. Is there any discussion on this one? Councilman Veer.
On that first, I just had, I just had a question as far as you have the parcels and then the amounts and the taxable value, and I kind of wasn't following that, like on the first one. It's, the amount is the amount of the lien, Councilman Veer?
The amount of the lien is, now, could this be a construction lien or?
Those were demolition.
Demolition liens, okay.
The first one is self-how, and the other is one that we demolished with council approval on East A Joe.
The seventeen nine sixty-four?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more questions on the lien report? Okay, we'll move into communications petitions. Item B, which is July 3rd, Independence Day parade. As you guys know, we have our parade on the 3rd. It's always a tremendous event, something the community is very proud of. Sam is heading it up for the city, so there's a pre-registration form on here. We are encouraging people to pre-register, although there will be registration available at the event. Pre-registration gives us an opportunity to be more efficient. So, that's in the packet. I would encourage people to pre-register and also to attend. Any discussion on that item? Okay, item letter C in communications petition is a reading emergency unit update, and I see Keith's here, so. Keith, how are you, sir?
Hello, city council members. I'm just stopping in to see if there's any questions I can answer, or if there's any complaints I can address. In the meantime, I'm going to give you some information to go along with me being here. In front of you is response times. The first page should be the year of 2023, and you can see that the average response time in the city of Hillsdale is seven minutes and two seconds. That was out of nine hundred and fifty-three responses in the city. Annually, we responded to in 2023, three thousand two hundred and three calls, so you pretty much almost make up a third of that in the city of Hillsdale. That's a lot of call volume. The second page is to where we're at right now for 2024, January 1st to June 16th. We're still running at seven minutes and fourteen seconds as an average response time, and the call volume is four hundred and thirteen for the year so far. Wanted to bring that to you to show you. I report corally to the Board of Commissioners. I'm not sure if you watch that on the YouTube channel or go there yourselves, but our average response time for the first quarter for all of our service area, which is eleven townships and four cities, is eight minutes and forty-one seconds, average response time. Outside our U service area, but still in Hillsdale County, was sixteen minutes and forty-three seconds. Our out-of-county mutual aid calls, fifteen minutes and twenty-six seconds. You would think, why is our mutual aid less than our in-county, out-of-area? That's because we're staffing three stations, and our Litchfield station, when it's staffed, it's right there next to Calhoun, Jackson County, and Branch County. So we offer them a lot of mutual aid, decreases our response times. Most of the times, as you, I've reported to you in the past, we don't respond emergently to calls. It's give or take the situation, our policies, our procedures, and what the call is actually on the CAD, protocols, that we will turn our lights and sirens on, but the majority of the time, it's a non-emergent. So even though we're coming through town without the lights and sirens on, doesn't mean that we're not on a call. Right now, our current levels, staffing levels, full-time paramedics is six, and then our casual paramedic is one. We have full-time EMTs and advanced EMTs, and we have a nine total for full-time. Park-time casual staffing for EMTs, we have seven. There, we have a new deputy director in place, which is Linda Kors, if you're familiar with her. She's a paramedic that works in the office with me, and I'm a paramedic as well. We try to get out of the office to run calls, but when we're out running calls, we're falling way behind with the multiple hats that we wear doing our profession. Routinely now, we're staffing two or three stations, which is good with our staffing levels and where we stand. We track our unable-to handles for the year of 2023, which unable-to handles is how many times Hudson, Somerset, Steubin County, Williams County had to come into our service area because we were unavailable. Unable-to handle the call, that could be due to 911 calls, or if we were out on a transfer, is a hundred and twenty-six times last year, 2023. But we also track our mutual aid of how many times we go into everybody else's service area, and that was a hundred and seven times. You can see it's pretty much reciprocated. We're in their area just as much as they're in ours. Other than that, that's all the information I have. Anything I can answer for you?
Thank you, Keith. Any questions for Keith? Councilman Sharp.
Your response time, seven minutes and fourteen seconds, is that, that's the average, so does that include when you're transporting somebody and the ambulance is not available, you have to bring Somerset or Waldron or somebody to handle a call in Hillsdale? That goes against that, correct?
No, them are our response times.
Your?
Somerset, Hudson, whatever ambulance service comes into our service area, they track their response times, and I'm not sure what those would be.
Okay, because I know in the past, we've had to call. I remember one, there was CPR in progress, and they had to call an ambulance from another community to get here, and they worked on that person for probably a good twenty-five, thirty minutes. And that, that's kind of concerning when you think you've got an ambulance here and you have to call Somerset to cover because you guys were transporting somebody to somewhere else or another call. But that's, I have nothing against you guys. You, you were there for my son when I needed it, and I'll always be in your corner for that. But it's, the response time is still not bad. It's pretty good.
And, and thank you for that. You do hit some points that most people don't even, you know, they're not aware of. People don't think about 911 services, law enforcement, firefighters, EMS until they need it. So they don't know what entails our agency. We have, if we have three ambulances working 24/7, 365, how many people dial 911 at the same time? If you've got five people, four people, we need an ambulance from somewhere else. The great thing about being in Hillsdale County is you have a military that's up for renewal, and that covers five ambulance services that are in Hillsdale County. Waldron, Somerset, Addison, Hudson, and ourselves, so five, four ALS and one BLS agency. And most times, we're averaging nine ambulances on for all five of those. So, yes, our U has a service area of eleven townships and four cities, but we have a contract with the county that is for all the ambulance services that receive that milage money to be responsible for responding into the service area. It's just no different than us going into somebody else's in Hillsdale County. And as I reported before as well, is that when we're down to one ambulance, so if our U takes a transfer from Hillsdale Hospital, because we only service one hospital, which is Hillsdale, if we take a transfer from there and we only have one ambulance left, we don't go outside our county, we will not take mutual aid outside the county, we will not take another transfer. We stay committed with one ambulance guaranteed 24/7 that we're going to be available for an emergency. If everybody dials 911 every couple hours, we'll be all right. But when they want to go eight hours, and what happens is they'll go eight hours, nobody has a call, and then in, you know, five minutes, you have six calls going on at once, and everybody's just scrambling across the county. It's just the nature of the beast. We can't predict.
Thank you, Keith. Any more questions for Keith? Thank you for your consistent updates, Keith.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on. We do not have a representative from the Kiefer House Hotel here, so we're going to skip item D and go into item letter E in communications petitions. Commissioner update from Commissioner Ingles. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I had the experience, two weeks ago, I attended the Seventh Annual North American Active Assailant Conference. This was held in Troy, and at this conference, we had speakers that were present and took care of some of the mass events that we've had in our country in the last few years. Oxford High School, the Aurora Movie Theater, Nashville, shooting at the church and school, and Pulse, the nightclub in Orlando. The big takeaway, we also had a speaker from Michigan State University shooting, one of the fathers who lost his daughter. It was a very overwhelming conference. Much emotion and much experience gained from, from that conference. We heard things that worked in all of those communities, and we heard some things that did not work. The whole point of the conference was to educate for those if by some unforeseen and tragic case that happens in our own community, that we gain the experience of things that worked and, and from the, the people that actually lived it. I essentially, without going into a whole lot of details on the, on the conference, there were two basic takeaways that I had. And the first takeaway is the preparation that's required prior to that terrible event. Without the preparation, without the tabletop exercises, there's so much chaos and confusion that occurs naturally. The preparation of who is going to lead the way, how to handle all of the the help that people try and bring into your community, the donations, what to do with the donations, how to handle the media. There's so many things that come up. The preparation is the, one of the number one main takeaways. At the time of the event, is no time to be learning. The other takeaway was what they call the protocol and playbook handbook. In 2021 and 2020, interviews of mayors, first responders, and other experts who responded to mass shootings were brought together, and based on those experiences, combined with federal resources, they created a mass shooting protocol and playbook. And as Commissioner, as an attendee of this conference, I was not there as Doug Ingles, I was not there only as a commissioner, but as a representative for Hillsdale County to bring back the information. So I've shared with City Manager Mackey. Mayor's received an email, Police Chief Hepner, I'm bringing the information, the protocol and playbook that they discuss here is a two-hundred-page document. When Nashville had their shooting, the their city administrator had just gone through, the, the community had just gone through a bombing episode as well. So they had already many things in place, even though they had many things in place to take care of a tragedy, the first the first thing that she did was she grabbed over her shoulder, the playbook, brought it out, step by step, what to do and how to handle it. So, I've shared this playbook, and I come here tonight just to tell you about this experience, and if you do have any questions, please ask. But that's my big update for tonight, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for Doug? Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we will move out of communications petitions, and we will move into our public hearing, which is revoke IFE certificate 2017-181 for which is revoke IFE certificate 2017-181 for Cork Coil Composites LLC. So I'm going to open the public hearing right now, and Sam?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm up here tonight because this is the third time that city staff are recommending, Council revoked the industrial facilities tax exemption certificate that was issued to 221 Industrial Drive for Cork Coil Composites LLC. This recommendation is based on our finding that Cork Coil is in default to the IFE agreement it entered into at the city of Hillsdale. Specifically, there are two ways Cork Coil has failed to comply with the agreement. It has not commenced with manufacturing operations despite the facility's listed completion date of December 15th of 2020. And it has not created 12 to 25 new jobs as listed on the IFE application. Over the last several years, and you'll remember I was here last October when we talked about this again, city staff have repeatedly requested documentation showing that Cork Coil is in compliance with the IFE agreement. We have not been provided with any evidence that Cork Coil has commenced manufacturing operations at 221 Industrial Drive, nor any evidence that Cork Coil has created 12 to 25 new jobs as a result of any such manufacturing activity. Furthermore, at no time since last October have city staff been prevented, have been provided with an estimate or a timeline for when Cork Coil intends to come into compliance with the IFE agreement. An IFE agreement, or an IFE certificate, rather, is subject to revocation if jobs were not created or maintained. Additionally, in the latest correspondence from Mr. Homavec dated May 16th, 2024, he confirms that manufacturing operations have not commenced. In summary, Cork Coil's compliance with utilizing the real property for which the exemption was granted is not being met. It is the opinion of city staff that Cork Coil Composites has failed to proceed in good faith with the operation of the facility, consistent with the purposes of Public Act 198, 1974. Our recommendation for council is to adopt the attached resolution, revoking IFE certificate 2017-181, and further directing the city manager upon receipt of an order from the state tax commission revoking the certificate to invoke the clawback provisions of the IFE agreement.
Thank you, Sam. Are there any questions for Sam while he's at the podium? Councilman Stugel.
What's, what's the condition of the building?
As far as I know, our city code enforcement team has not been granted access to the interior of the building. I know they did an assessment review recently where they took some photos of the outside of the building. We can provide those to you. The photos of the exterior of the building don't appear significantly different from the prior photos that we have.
Any more questions for Sam? Councilman Beer?
Sam, what was the original length of time on that IFT?
So that IFT was granted for 12 years. And the facility was supposed to have been complete, according to the applicant, by December 15th of 2020.
Councilman Wolfman.
It appears that if you look at what the language of the act says, that this is for the, to revoke the certificate, says, or that the purposes for which the certificate was issued are not being fulfilled as a result of a failure of the holder to proceed in good faith with a replacement, restoration, or construction operation of the replacement facility or new facility, or where the use of the speculative building as a manufacturing facility in a manner consistent with the purpose of this act and in the absence of circumstances that are beyond the control of the holder. And I believe that Mr. Homavec will be able to talk to us about the circumstances that were beyond the control of the holder, including a storm in 2018 and just a whole host of other things. So anyway, I just wanted to make that, make that point. That's what the statute says.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman. We will bring up Mr. Homavec so he can speak to council. He came tonight. And also, if I remember right, from the last time that we did this, was it six months ago? We, what we would do up here would be to draft a resolution, but we don't actually revoke the IFE certificate. That's something that the state of Michigan has to do. And they can decide whether or not they want to do it, and they don't have to do it, or is that how that works, or?
That's correct. So the process to revoke the certificate, council would pass a resolution to be sent to the state tax commission so they could issue an official order of revocation. Any party that's aggrieved by the state tax commission has the opportunity to appeal their decision under the provisions of the Administrative Procedures Act. So they would be able to request a rehearing of a state tax commission decision if they apply in writing within 60 days from the date that the state tax commission has mailed the notice of revocation. So the attached resolution tonight would simply be a resolution asking the state tax commission to revoke the certificate.
What does the city get out of revoking the certificate? Do we get any benefit out of it, or is it just you haven't complied with the deal that you made, so we're going to revoke the certificate, or is there?
So this is.
One of the clawback provisions, I guess, is.
Yeah. So this is a tax exemption for a manufacturing facility. So they received a tax exemption which froze the value, the taxable value of the real property of the facility. There are some calculations included in the packet that we provided to council from Kim Thomas, our city assessor. And you can see that the total amount of abated taxes so far, which doesn't include 2024 taxes yet, is $249,421 that the city would have other, would basically be able to get back, plus interest at 1% over the adjusted prime rate. So that's the amount of money essentially that is, that we're talking about here.
Any more questions? Councilman Bell, you don't?
What's the difference between the 250 that was listed and the 10,000? What are those?
Sure. So Kim provided another calculation on a different spreadsheet. So even if this, even if the rehabilitation of the facility didn't happen and council didn't grant a tax exemption, the amount of taxes being paid would have gone up each year simply with the rate of inflation. So if the value of the property had never been frozen as a result of this IFT being granted, there's an additional $10,364 of taxes that the city would have accrued during this period.
Is the letter of agreement, as well as of course the statute, the, the governing document here?
So a letter of agreement is required under that Public Act 198 of 1974. So basically, any IFE agreement or IFE application for the city to approve it, there has to be a letter of agreement. It's part of the statutory requirements.
Is that our contract with Cork Coil? Is that what we're analyzing this based on?
So that is, yep. So Cork Coil LLC entered into that agreement with the city of Hillsdale.
Does it, does it state anywhere that they have to commence manufacturing?
So there, if you, if you review that IFE agreement, which is included in the packet, there are job creation requirements.
Right.
They have to create the number of jobs listed on the application. And then it says, if the city finds that they have not proceeded in good faith with operating, operations at that facility, the subject facility, it can be revoked. And that is also, that is also in Public Act 198 of 1974.
Huh. Okay, I, yeah. The, the job creation, that's just subpoint one on page 65. Shall include persons employed by the company, its affiliates, contractors, co-tenants, and other occupants of 221 Industrial Drive. I don't know why that was written so broadly, but why are we not including the 12 people that are employed at the facility?
So if you look, if you look at the annual information report that Mr. Homavec submitted, he reports on their 12 jobs
Yeah.
that he claims were from outside staffing agencies. However, if you actually read the correspondence he included when submitting that report, he states, and I quote, "Employment opportunities have enabled staffing of 12 or more collectively between Metal Technologies, Precision Gauge, Mainz Importing, J&amp;J Trucking, AIS Automation Incorporated, and Deco Products. These companies maintain daily activity, including but not limited to storage and handling inventory and equipment, sorting and inspections, repacking and equipment maintenance at 221 Industrial Drive." So the situation here, and, and Kim has explained this a number of times to Mr. Homavec, is that leasing temporary warehouse space to other companies is not a manufacturing operation consistent with why the exemption was granted. So the industrial user that's responsible for paying taxes on the property, which in this case is Cork Coil Composites, they cannot count jobs by other companies who are leasing space in the facility for an ancillary use for warehousing or storage in support of their own industrial operations. So essentially, those are jobs, they are employed by companies that are not related to Cork Coil Composites LLC.
Okay.
They're not employees of Cork Coil.
Then what would this other occupants refer to? I mean, leasing to someone else who's going to manufacture there?
So there's a number of different options for how Cork Coil can hire employees and, and, you know, what they can do with the facility. But the purpose of an IFT is to rehabilitate the facility for occupation and operation by the applicant. That's the primary purpose. So the job creation, you're looking for jobs that are attributable to the applicant, the project, not just extra space that is being used for a different purpose.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that, I, I, I agree. That's what, that's what it should be. But the, the actual contract does not read in that way. It, it's, it's so broad and vague. Am I, maybe I just didn't read through the statute enough? Maybe that's clarified in the statute?
Well, if, if I may, for purposes of the agreement, you could have, you know, all of those things that are references, affiliates, all that sort of thing. So what Sam's indicating is if it is a company or an employee that is hired to perform services for Cork Coil, right? Which could be someone who works for a subsidiary, someone who, you know, he could have multiple entities perhaps that are related to Cork Coil that are involved in the operation. He presumably could count those people if they're performing a part of that manufacturing process. Same thing for if Cork Coil was hiring people through a staffing agency presumably, right? That's someone who doesn't already have a job for some, with somebody else, but is being hired from the, the staffing agency to work for Cork Coil.
So basically, we have jobs, they're just not the right jobs.
They're not, they're not jobs that are created by Cork Coil Composites for the manufacturing purposes.
But they are employed in Hillsdale, and they're working in Hillsdale. They're just not the right job for your contract.
They're, they're employed by other companies that are not the applicant who holds the IFTs.
For purposes of the statute, purposes of the agreement, they both assume that they are not people who are already employed by some other company, right? The issue is to create a job, not to have the location where someone else who already works for some other company just be that facility, basically. So if, if I have a company that's renting space from you, well, I could rent the space anywhere, right? I still have to have somebody that's going to manage those materials and move them back and forth out of that space. So the mere fact that I get to rent the space from Cork Coil as opposed to from Mr. Palladino doesn't really matter. It doesn't create a new job. It just determines where my employee who's going to handle that stuff is going to go.
Continue.
Okay, good. So are we, do we need to make the judgment then that if, if this building hadn't been renovated, these jobs would exist somewhere else? Are we, are we confidently saying that, that they would just move somewhere else, or did? Has Cork Coil put the money into this building and that allowed this company to expand its operations? Do we, do we know that? Is that relevant to our decision here?
So in, you know, in this case, I would just, you know, once again reiterate. So Cork Coil Composites, when they indicate on the IFE application, they are going to create a certain number of jobs. Those are jobs that are attributable to the project for which they are getting the exemption. And so in this case, you know, just having employees of other companies who are utilizing that facility does not, does not meet, does not meet that obligation. And then also, manufacturing has not commenced, production has not commenced to the facility. You know, in the estimation of city staff, he has not proceeded in good faith with operations at the facility. There's no manufacturing taking place.
Councilman Sherb.
So he's just basically renting out space in that building for whatever they need to put in there, correct? There's no actual people working in there. I've been by that building numerous times, all the time when I'm up in that area. There's not a car in that parking lot. There's no activity up there. The question is, what he said, he was going to create jobs. He came here last year, showed the product he was going to make there. There are going to be 12 jobs. All this was going to happen. There was just a little bit of legal questions going on. And here we are still debating the thing. There's still no jobs there. The building sits empty. He has fixed it up some, true, but it's not doing what he promised. And you're talking $249,000 of tax money that this city could have used for something else. That's all I'm going to say right now. I would, I would love to hear from this gentleman.
Any more questions for Sam? Councilman Beer?
Okay, Sam, on the second page where it's the 10,364, that's based on the, the condition of the building when Drew purchased it back. And I'm not sure if it was 2016, 2017, correct?
Correct. So that's second page, yep. It's just basically what the city would have gotten in taxes.
And that's what, because he's, uh, but he was still paying tax on that portion, correct? So in 2018, he paid 6927. 7184 in 2018, 7262 in 2020, 2021, 7370, 7360 in 2022, and 2023 paid 7444. And then the current with the 5% increase, he would, he's slated to pay 8,054. So if you actually not count the 2024, the abated taxes, by my calculations, I'm going to say is like $2,000, basically, all right? Just assuming that he bought the building, did nothing to it. Now, if he wouldn't have done the, gone into this disagreement, and he bought the building back then and put this money in, because on that first page where it's 249,000, so he paid, he paid 23593, whether it be in 17, 16, whenever. That was 100 with the other cost and everything, and he's been paying tax on that with the understanding that he was going to rehabilitate it and get some new jobs. The, the job parts, he hasn't done, but the rehabilitation per his figures, he's put in a little bit over a million. And that's where that 249 comes from, correct?
Correct. So the 249,000 is basically, this is what he would owe the city based on the rehabilitation value of the building. If we were to go ahead and revoke the certificate and clawback what we should have been getting if, because the agreement was.
I understand that. Now, if he would not have gone into that agreement and done those improvements to the building, be in the roof, the, you know, a lot of different aspects, the plumbing, mechanical, and all that other stuff, would the city go in and reassess the value of that and add all that to the tax base? I, I, I was kind of thinking that on the, on the added tax base, you know, 249,000 over a period of six, seven years, when the person only paid 230, 23593 initially, I don't know, I find that kind of excessive. And that's kind of, you know, my question to you, Sam, would be that had he not entered this agreement and done those improvements, would the city be charging on the 36502 or the projected 42,256 for set improvements done to a structure if he hadn't started his manufacturing?
I, I guess I'm not fully understanding your question, the, the way you phrased it, Mr.
Well, so.
Councilman Beer, if I may interrupt.
Counselor Verne, if I may interrupt, um, so the numbers that, um, have been presented by the assessor are based off Mr. Homavec's supplied numbers. So that's the numbers that were included in the agreement. We would contest that not all the monies that Mr. Homavec has attributed to the building, um, should be considered. But that being aside, hit, those numbers are specifically his numbers. Would it be reassessed if he had improved it? Yes, it would have been reassessed back then. Would it match his numbers? No guarantee, but the numbers that are in the spreadsheets are basically on the numbers that were presented, um, and, and approved in the original IFT, IFE, rather.
So if a business paying tax and they put a new roof on, the city goes, reassesses that business and charges them more in tax?
We periodically reassess all buildings, residential, commercial, industrial. So, uh, it's, it's usually a, um, a cycle that they review them and/or when they go up with inflation. So there's a, a couple chances or times that one would be reassessed or evaluation changed.
Now, I'm not real familiar with commercial, but I know on residential, I understand that way you can reassess it at a higher level, but it can only be taxed in those cases with all those numbers. This last case, the residential went up 5%,
Right.
per, uh, the, the act, whatever the act was back when they had the amendment. I don't know, does, does commercial have the same or no? As far as, as far as do they have taxable and assessable value for commercial properties where you can only tax them at taxable value and can't go over the assessed value?
This is what we.
Be nice to have the assessor here.
This is what we talked about two weeks ago. Industrial properties can be reassessed and then taxed at the full rate according to Kim, which is the whole reason we do the abatements, because they don't get the same privilege as residential homeowners of having a reassessment, but the reassessment is capped at a 5% increase in the taxable value, right?
And there's also a difference between, yes, between assessments for improvements and just the amount that your taxes go up because of the fair market value of the property as well. So even on the residential side, if you add on to your house or make significant improvements to it, that cap doesn't apply, right? Because it can be reassessed for the value of those additional improvements. The cap is based upon the assessed value of that structure as it sits today. Now, that doesn't count like if you're putting a new kitchen generally or something like that. But if you, for example, I had fed clients in the past who had houses that burned down, a house they built, and lots of stuff that the old one didn't have because they added things when they rebuilt it. And so it was reassessed at the value as rebuilt, not at the original value, whereas had they just repaired the structure so it was the same as it had been before, they wouldn't have been reassessed. So there are even within the residential, um, realm of assessments, some distinctions that relate to that cap. But yes, Mr. Palladino is correct, based upon what the assessor has indicated before and what the General Tax Act provides, um, General Property Tax Act, that, that's the way it works with commercial or industrial property. I should say industrial property, right? Hence the industrial facilities exemption. It, it's a much different assessment process than there is for other types of property.
But of course, okay, the council, a couple councils ago, 2016, uh, actually created this tax abatement up in the industrial park to address the, uh, dilapidated buildings in that area, or in this case, the old Hillsdale 2011, to try to get it to a better state, uh, more operability or something like that. So, um, I don't know, I, I just struggle with that, with that 240,000, because actually when, when I'm looking at it, if he would have just bought it and sat on it, didn't done nothing, left it in that state, he, we would only be out to $2,000 right now. And that's what, as far as per that agreement, but because he was doing all this additional stuff.
The, yeah, the, the difference here is that Mr. Homavec, um, you know, as part of the IFE application, agreed he was going to invest certain sums of money into that property, in this case, um, over a million dollars. And in exchange for the creation of jobs and the economic benefit to the city, the exemption grants him tax relief on what he otherwise, uh, you know, would be paying based on the value of the property with the renovations. So if he does not meet that agreement, then essentially what you were saying is the abated taxes, um, the money that he otherwise should have paid the city needs to go back to the city.
And, and in effect, you have to remember that the reason that the jobs part of it is important is in effect, that's what you're buying with the abatement, right? You're saying, we want you to invest the money here so we can have those jobs in the community because we need more jobs, because those jobs support other jobs in the community, and that increases the tax revenue within the city through that presumably, right? So if you do not get the benefit of that, Mr. Homavec still has a building that he's made these improvements for and presumably could get that money back out of it were he to sell the property. And the trade-off for the tax exemption is, like I said, at least from the, if you look at when they adopted these types of things, it's to increase employment in areas as a tool to get jobs, new job creation within the community. Now, you're free to look at it however you want to because you are the body who makes this decision, this recommendation to the State Tax Commission. But when you're considering it, you need to think about the statute as a whole, not just the piece of the improvement part, but also the job creation part.
Counselor Wolfram?
Can you tell me what the total manufacturing employment in, uh, the city of Hillsdale is right now?
The total amount of jobs employed in manufacturing? I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay. But it could be substantial, and that, my point is, an extra 20 manufacturing jobs seems to be less of a, um, less of, something that we would like to have as opposed to putting 1.3 million dollars into fixing up the old building. And I don't know that 20 is a large number relative, obviously you don't either, is that a large number relative to the total amount of manufacturing employment in the city?
Well, I'll, I'll just, you know, say this, and this kind of summarizes what I stated earlier. You know, when he asked counsel for this tax exemption, for this abatement, it was on the condition that he was going to follow through, um, with certain promises, and that has not been kept, and that is one of the reasons that city council can ask the State Tax Commission to go ahead and revoke the certificate. It's because he's provided with a, he's provided, he's been provided with the benefit in the form of abated taxes. The city hasn't received the benefit of the jobs that it was promised.
Any more questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam.
Oh, sorry, the, uh, the abated taxes, that county and city, that can't just speak city, right?
Um, I, I would have to check with Kim Thomas to see what she used to go into this calculation, but I believe if you look at the IFE agreement, they have to pay back all taxing entities.
And the IFE is a county exemption as well?
No, so the IFE is granted by the city, um, but presumably the city in this case, you know, collects taxes that later get dispersed back to the county. So he would have to repay the complete value of all the taxes.
I was, I was just going to, to indicate that I do believe that it, it includes, um, taxes that otherwise would go to the school district, taxes would otherwise go to the county, anybody that gets a piece of the total tax pie.
Any more questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam.
I think Mr. Homavec is here.
I see Mr. Homavec back there. Mr. Homavec, would you like to come to the podium?
Mayor, counsel. This is the third time I've been here, can, can you hear me? This is the third time I've been here discussing this opportunity, and I just don't know where to begin. I mean, it's, uh, the situation, and I hate to keep on kicking a dead horse, but the, the reason we're not in manufacturing at this point in time is due to elements that have been beyond my control. And that's all part of the, the issue is, you know, and I sent you all an email this afternoon, hopefully you all received it, and it explains the amount of good faith that I've put into the business and the building and the restorations and the, the light, the heat, the roof, the plumbing, the doors, the windows, uh, it goes on and on and on. Plus, you know, we have a couple of million dollars worth of, you have very high-end extrusion equipment in there that all supports production. And most recently, Gary Wolfram was out there last week, you know, watched, walked the line with me, you know, and, uh, Rob has been out there, you know, I've invited Sam to come out there. And most recently, in, in April of this year, I got a letter saying, hey, we want to do a, a six-month annual review of, of the assessment of the property. I said, when and where? They told me what time they're going to show up, never, you know, never knocked on my door, never asked to come in to see.
That's, 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 um, that's not true, Mr. Homavec. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but they came to the door, you never showed up.
I was, I was there that whole day.
No, you weren't, sir, but continue on.
I was there the whole day. I was there the whole day, my phone number is right on the door, so I was there.
Would, let, let me, uh, let me ask counsel something. Would we like to kick this to the next meeting and, on Mr. Homavec's word of honor, get the city out there, get Mr. Mackey out there, get Mr. Fry out there, get whoever else counsel wants to go tour the building and see the progress that's been made? Because I have a feeling, um, there's a couple things, um, I would like to see the building and I would like to see the progress that Mr. Homavec's made. And another thing is, uh, a question that I don't think anybody in the room can answer, and I don't know if Mr. Homavec could answer it or not, is the 12 jobs, the 12 people that are working in the building, if this certificate was, was, uh, was removed and as a result, Mr. Homavec was unable to continue with manufact, or with, with what he's doing with manufacturing or leasing the space, would those 12 people lose their jobs? That's information that I don't have, and I feel like it's important information. So my, I'm, Bruce, I'll give you an opportunity to say whatever you want, but my suggestion is we move this to the next meeting, miss, assuming Mr. Homavec, you will let the city into, tour the building, and you'd let us in there to check it out, and you can show us the stuff that you've done, because I don't want to kick somebody when they're down personally, but I would like to see the progress that you've made, and I think that's a fair request.
Like I, like I shared with you in today's email, the progress is there, the photos don't lie. I was there, uh, despite what Mr. Packy is saying, I was there the whole day awaiting the arrival of the assessor to come out.
I'm not accusing you of lying, sir.
And I'm just, I'm just, you know, hear, hear me out. You're welcome to come in. There's, you know, right now, we are still awaiting several hundred thousand dollars in settlement money to be submitted, to be returned to me due to this litigation. That chunk of money is the, is the, is the seed money that I had spent in legal fees that were being applied towards purchasing materials and things of that nature, as I shared with Gary last week when he was there. Just one truckload of material, one week's worth of inventory to supply this machine is about 55 to 60,000 dollars, all right? If you have to buy, you know, months of inventory, we're talking a couple hundred grand just to keep this thing going. So, you know, I need this money to get the business up and running. I, you know, there was, there was questions that were brought to me at my attention last week about, well, why don't you get a loan and take a loan out for this money? I could not pursue to get a loan until the lien was off the building and the court and the case was closed. That was closed on the 12th of February. First of March, I'm sitting in the, in the, with a loan officer here in Hillsdale, saying, hey, the loan's off, the lien's clear, and let's start this. I provided her with a full run-up, a pro forma of production intent effective July 1st start date, figuring that that money, that judgment that was, was applied, that was signed off and authorized on the 12th of February was valid. I was expecting those funds. Without those funds, I can't buy, you know, 200,000 dollars worth of material. That plant is ready to go. Turn key, hit the switch, and it's running. I don't have the money to buy the materials to get it going. And at this point in time, Southern Michigan Bank and Trust, we're still negotiating on, you know, getting a loan. It has not been approved. So I'm, I'm there, but to push this off again, you know, you know, you can have a, you can have a vote today or push it off and, and come in and see, it's up to you.
I mean, I'd like to see, I, I, I'm not saying that your, your pictures aren't significant, but I, before making a decision, I'd like to see it, and I'd like Sam and Dave to have the opportunity to see it as well, and I'd like you to be able to be like, this is, this is what I've done, this is what I've done, um. If we revoke the certificate, will this room, your?
It's out the door.
It's out the door.
Out the door.
Well, I, I understand that, I understand that. No, I understand that. Yes, sir, Bruce, go ahead.
Thank you. You've cut to us three different times. I've been on this council for quite a while. You keep giving us the same song and dance. Last time it was the court thing, now it's here, can't get a loan. It keeps going on. Where are you going to get the 12 people? I just talked to Myers people, they've had a turnover of people there. The good workers are not out there. I don't know what you're going to have involved in the machinery run, I don't, that's none of my business. I don't see this working. I just see you keep dragging, kicking the can down the road. That is my opinion. I have ties with that building. I was, worked in that building for years. I know that building better than you do. And I just see that building sitting empty. I mean, it'd be great if you could bring jobs here. I don't know where you're going to get the 12 people, because the job market is so tight out there right now for good workers. But I, I do praise you for bringing the jobs here possibly, but you continue to tell us you're going to have, bring these jobs here. Six months ago, you're almost ready to go. Here we are again, asking again, why not? Now you're telling us the bank thing. I don't want to know. I'm just, this is where I stand, and I'm frustrated with it. And I, I, I had my way, we would get a clawback. Thank you.
Mr. Sherb, I am, I am the most frustrated person in this city when it comes to getting this business up and running. I mean, this, this has been my whole life's dream, and to be pushed away, you know, kicked to the curb by the legit, uh, judicial system, you know, COVID pushed it off, you know, I, it's, you know, this is, this is, it irks me that I cannot run production and hire the jobs that need to be run. So like I said, I, I sympathize with, you know, you may know the building better than I do, but I can challenge that. Okay. Uh, Mayor, if you would, just, uh, I'm real flexible, so I'd like to go see the facility.
I'm real flexible, too.
So whatever this council decides, I'll comply.
What's that, the 15th? So one month, yeah, that, that's a month, um, sometime, second, first, well, first week of Ju, yeah, yeah. Sometime in between the 8th of July and the 12th of July. That way, we're getting the holiday out of the way, because that first week of July is going to be a bear for everybody, I'm sure. Is that a possibility, sir?
Absolutely.
All right, all right. Dave, you got something?
Sure. So, we, this board has hard discussions about tax incentives all the time, and usually we're discussing how we should maybe not give tax incentives, or do, are they actually needed? And here we're coming to you and telling you that we've done one that in our opinion has not fulfilled its obligation, and you're fighting against, against the, the city staff to, to not revoke it or not pass the resolution. Ultimately, it will go to the state? I mean, I've been here, I've been part of this process from start to finish. I understand, I, I was involved in the discussions with Mr. Homavec, um, early on, with EDC providing, uh, monies to help do the, the testing of the ground. So others, uh, I know that was over 20,000. monies to help do the, the testing of the ground. Um, so others, uh, I know that was over twenty thousand dollars that they kicked in. So I know how much the city has put in. I know, you know, I know Mr. Homevek is invested in this. But when you have an agreement, you either have people honor the agreement or why have an agreement at all? And there's no guarantee that 12 jobs that are discussed aren't, are, are actual jobs. If I walk in his facility and move a box or take a box to my other facility, is that a, is that a job from his, that he's created? I doubt it. I mean, we will go back and we will look, we will contact those businesses and ask them. Did you create this job specifically because of, uh, the core coil facility? And I will almost bet you money, they will say no, but we'll do it because that's the concern here is that we're being too heavy-handed. But, um, you know, whether Mr. Homevek gets two hundred thousand from a settlement, if you're waiting on a settlement, what if they file bankruptcy? You never get your money. And we're sitting here waiting and waiting. And next thing you know, that 12 years will be up and we won't still have jobs. So, you know, we can go look at it. We can do more due diligence, but based on what Mr. Homevek has provided us and looking at the agreement, the staff just does not believe that this project has moved forward, um, as it should. And whether it's Mr. Homevek isn't capitalized enough, that's not our problem. It, you know, the things that we're digging into here are really not our problem. Our problem is, is he honoring the agreement. If you guys think he is honoring the agreement, then, then we don't uh, contest it and send it to the state. If you do, then we do, but.
Was trying to step on your toes, Dave. I know you guys said you didn't get a chance to see the building, so I thought.
I would like to say, we, we're not fighting against the city staff at all. We're just doing due diligence. We want to make sure we are business friendly and there's a lot of questions on both sides of this. I don't, I don't think we're fighting anybody. I think we want to know before we make this call.
May I say something? One, one last parting comment here is you just mentioned that everything that has been beyond my control and part of the IFE and the, the agreement is if there are situations beyond my control, I am not in fault. I am not committing, you know, bad faith. These are things that I cannot control. All right? And I've said that for three consecutive times. And it's all based on the same root cause.
Can I? Yes, sir. That's why I brought up at the beginning what the statute says. Certainly there's been lots of circumstances beyond his control and a very unique situation. And I think by allowing people to go in, take a look at the place, I think that's a, a grand idea. He can explain, he can show you the, the manufacturing equipment and what his, uh, you know, when he thinks that he'll be able to get going.
Yeah. And if he doesn't let us in the building, then we can come back in a couple of weeks and be like, he's not operating on bad faith.
Right, right, right. So.
So, yes, sir.
So then you can't get 12 employees or you keep having a rotating door with employees. Then what are you going to do? Then you're going to have the excuse, well, I can't get manufacturing out because I can't keep a staff here. Then you're going to come back to us and say, here we go again. I'm telling you, the workforce out there is not as good as it used to be. It's changed a lot. A lot of these places you work in now, they require you to be robot specialist too, because you're running CNCs. When I left Paragon, I was running six CNCs and two robots. Not the old days when you ran one machine and that was it. You had to be very diverse in everything you do nowadays and those type of people are in high demand. So your work is cut out for you, even if you get by, I, I have nothing else to say to you, sir. I just want to see this building. We can deal with this when the time comes.
Sure.
Shoot an email out, uh, group email to schedule something that works for everybody the week of the eighth of July. Is that okay, ladies and gentlemen?
Can we not get it done in the next two weeks or do we have to reset a public hearing?
We have to reset a public hearing. If we're going to have a public hearing, we have to have a public hearing to revoke the certificate. I will send an email and copy you on it, Mr. Homevek and we'll, yes, sir.
Being that we're all here except Rob, can't we just do it now as far as?
Set the ti- date and time?
Yeah.
Um, I probably can't. I don't know if everybody else's schedule works for them.
I, I, I can do it right now and then you have to worry about missing an email like me.
Okay, um, let's see. Well, what do you guys think? Remember we still have to open the podium for public comment, so, um, well, the, the meeting is July fifteenth. So July, July eighth is fine with me. Is it July eighth okay with you?
I'll make, I'll make it work.
Seven PM or seven AM? Well, I want to make sure. Okay, okay. So whoever can make it and the city staff, so we should have it during the city staff's workday so they're not working outside of regular working hours. Tell when. Well, do you want to just shoot for the ninth then? I don't have to rush. Is the ninth okay, guys? That would be a Tuesday. Okay, then the ninth, July ninth? At what, noon one? July ninth at noon. Yes, sir.
Do it.
Okay.
As a procedural, um, item.
You think we should?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My suggestion might be that, that you, um, simply adjourn the current public hearing.
Okay.
Until the date when you're going to reconvene that hearing. That way you don't take the public comment and all that tonight. You would do that once you came back to discuss what you saw and what your, uh,
Okay.
decisions are with respect to the issue at that time. So you get the public comment at the same time.
Okay, sounds good. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt to adjourn the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to, uh, to something just dawned on me. Are we going to be violating Open Meeting Act? The Open Meeting Act by going over and touring the building as a group?
If you, if you go and tour the building as a group, I would suggest you do it in numbers at, or less than a quorum. Shifted for, um, if you, the, the issue with that otherwise is if you were all there and you discuss it at all while you're there, then you would have violated the Open Meetings Act. So one option is to not have a, a quorum of the council at a specific time either. You could do it in shifts, like one group come at, you know, nine o'clock, whatever time you were going to do it. Another one come a half hour later or whatever. So you're taking up this little time, but you're not all standing there talking about it together. Um, and the other thing is, is you should, as part of your motion to adjourn the, the public hearing tonight, state the date that you're going to reconvene at which meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to do that. Uh, I just, it just dawned on me.
Well, yeah, no, that, you are correct. If you all showed up there, that has the potential to be a violation of the Open Meetings Act to the extent that any of you discussed it there.
Okay, so no more than three of us, no more than four of us. And, uh, so we can do one and 12 and one. Is that okay, Mr. Homevek?
That's fine.
Okay. Who plans on attending? Councilman Wolfram, you've already saw the facility. Okay, so if everybody else shows up, uh, then, um, I'll do, I'll do noon. Okay, okay. All right, us four at noon. You guys at one and Rob if he should, if he comes. Okay. All right. I think we got most of the bases covered now. So yep. Do I have a motion to set a public hearing for Jul- continue the public hearing on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven PM? Motion on the floor from Councilman Wolfram, supported by Councilman Sharp, all in favor? And, oh, sorry, like Councilman Beer, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the eyes have it. And we've got our time. So we're going to meet over there. Do we need a motion for that? Okay, we'll see you on the fifteenth or we'll see you on the ninth.
The ninth. Very good.
At twelve and one. No, sir. We'll see you then.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, no old business. We'll move into new business. Item A, City Council Rules and Procedure Update. Let me get caught back up in my packet here. City Council Rules and Procedures. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, um, so this item actually came to the ONG Committee about adding or amending the council, city council rules and procedures. It's periodically updated. Um, the committee discussed adding or recommending to council adding legal opinions um, or the request for legal opinions. Um, the language that I have here um, was, um, what was discussed at the board, but Mr. Morrissey and I discussed that there should be a little further clarification on this. Um, and Mr. Morrissey, if you'll?
Yeah, the, the idea is that, um, if we ask the city attorney to do additional research other than the normal back and forth that we have at the meeting, that costs more money for the city. And we don't want, i- i- if, if we're going to be spending more money, that should be a, a, a decision of the full council rather than just, for example, a few, a few meetings back, I asked him to, um, to, to, to give us a, a report on conflict of interest. And so he had to do research and he had to, uh, he had to, uh, charge us extra for that. Um, so, so that should be, that's a budget decision that, that affects our, that affects the expenditures of, of the council. And that should be a full, full council decision. I asked in a public meeting, but still there was no vote taken. And I think we should not do that anymore, um, um, unless, unless the full council agrees to do it. Um, so that's, that's basically what, uh, the idea is. So the, the, uh, the, the language that you have in front of you says all legal opinions sought by member or members of the council shall be first approved by majority vote. Well, it shouldn't be all legal opinions because of course we routinely ask him, uh, Mr. Thompson, our, our opinions during the course of the meeting, but that doesn't cost us any extra money. And so what I suggest is something along the lines of, and, you know, we'll ask Mr. Thompson's opinion on this because it isn't going to cost us any extra money. Uh, all legal opinions that will require research on the part of the city attorney sought by members, et cetera, uh, will be, uh, approved by a majority vote. I don't know how, uh, if you look at that language we have, if we could amend that to, to, to do, is that, is that, is that fair language, would you say? Okay. So that, so what I would, uh, uh, suggest is legal opinions, all legal opinions that will require research on the part of the city attorney sought by a member or members of the council shall first be approved by a majority vote of the council at a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Hold on. Councilman Palladino, you have a question?
Yeah. What is a legal opinion? I mean, if we make a phone call, if we send an email, is that a legal opinion? Anytime we're asking any question or is this like we're asking for a write-up about a specific statute or ordinance?
A legal opinion is an opinion by a lawyer. And, and, and now the ones we're concerned about are the ones that, uh, add to the budget that cost us extra money beyond his ordinary, ordinary fees.
So does any communication with the city attorney constitute?
If it costs us money, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What costs us money?
So if you ask me a question and I have to respond by explaining some aspect of the law, um, as opposed to just, you had a question about fact, hey, I can't remember what we did with whatever, right? Um, I, I charge for that by the tenth of an hour. So for every six minutes worth of time I spend, if I have to look something up to tell you pull up a statute to make sure I'm citing the right language or whatever it might be to answer your question, then I think that's what Mr. Morrissey is, is talking about. Because then that does increase your expense a little bit as opposed to here. Like if you ask me a question here, I can tell you off the top of my head or from looking, if I've got materials right in front of me that I can pull up to look at it, that's different than if you called me tomorrow and asked me that question. Or if you asked me a question here and I said, I have to do some research, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, right?
Okay. And how will we do committee work then? If we need an ordinance written or all of those will have to be referred back to council before we can write up ordinances?
That's a good question.
You don't freelance. That's a long thing.
Well, that, that might be one amendment you could make to that language would be more approved by committee of the council.
That's why I was, should we just have it be a two, you just need two people to agree to it?
Well, to have a committee agree to it.
Right, two, that majority, two on a committee, correct?
Committee or a majority of the council. That does make some sense because you, committees do refer things to our office for comment or review. Um, sometimes you may come up with a proposed ordinance and want us to take a look at it and, uh, suggest any changes or make sure that the language is okay. So.
Uh, if I may continue, and then would this apply to city staff as well? So if the city needs a legal opinion on something, they would have to seek the council's approval?
You, you could not function as a city if you had to do that. So we get, we get questions every day from whether it's code enforcement or to review contracts for park usage or other kinds of things. And we're required to review those. Um, and that includes, we get a lot of stuff from the city manager's office, for example, um, with questions on how to handle something. Can we do X, Y, or Z? We've got this personnel problem. What are we supposed to do? So there's no way that you could deal with those if you had to come to council with that sort of stuff. I think the idea is, is that if you had nine different council people asking us questions about something and maybe it's not something that their council, the rest of the council's all that interested or cares about, it's obviously not probably something that the city staff needs to be able to operate on a day-to-day basis. If it was, I would suggest that what you would do is instead of make the request directly to me or to Mr. Lovinger is that you talk to, you know, somebody from the city staff, the assessor if it's an assessment issue or the city manager. Um, and they can pass out a question. That's, that's a nicer way probably to do that if it's an issue that you have a concern about and you want them to be able to give you an answer that requires some legal expertise.
I didn't even realize this was a contractual position that the charter makes it sound like it's a, it's a staff position.
It's a hired employee. The city attorney is an employee of the city.
We're considered an officer of the city, so this is city office. But think of it as your clerk or your treasurer, right? We're appointed. The city attorney is appointed and you pay a salary to these folks, right? Um, and instead of paying us a salary, you just pay us by the tenth of an hour.
I, I had assumed you were receiving a salary, so that's actually. I, I had assumed you were receiving a salary, so that's actually good to know just from my, my own knowledge. But this does seem to create some complications. It basically sets the precedent that the city can use the attorney as needed. But that we have to seek special permission, even though we are the legislative body.
Yeah, I agree with Josh, we're, we're neutered enough up here. I mean, we can't get anything done up here, I don't know. I, I want the elected officials to have more authority, not less authority. Now, don't get me wrong, if I have a question for Tom, I always include Dave on the question because. I feel like him and I have a good working relationship, but. I don't know. Hate to have to come to you guys every time I want to ask Tom a question.
And I, I don't have a problem answering questions from any of you, so this is just in terms of how you want to handle that.
Okay. Councilor Trump.
It was back in probably two thousand s eight, it might have been, I had a question for the city attorney, it was Lou Lauren at the time. He looked at me and said, you need to talk to your city manager, you don't come to me, you go through your city manager. If you have a legal question, that's what I was told. And that's the procedure I've always followed, if I've got a legal question or something. And we're gonna use taxpayers' money, I want to go through the chain of command. There's a chain of command we should follow and we should continue to follow. We are represented as the people, but we also work for the city and the people. And we just don't go up to city attorney and ask him a question if we don't agree with something, because then it has costed the taxpayers money. And we don't want to, we want to be very conscious about where we're spending our money on.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody got anything else to add? So, I mean, if we did this. What was your suggestion about the committee?
Well, it just seems like there are no committees now, at least in terms of actually, we could maybe. Make recommendations before the council, but we couldn't bring anything that was legally reviewed to the council. We would bring something, have it be reviewed, maybe, I mean, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. But it seems like a two-vote majority would be the minimum I could have, I, I'm not gonna support it either way. But a two-vote would at least make sense through the committee process.
I mean, I, 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 I understand when we're trying to avoid like some rogue council member that just non-stop, you know. Goes to the attorney with every single, you know, little concern that they have, we don't want that situation, but.
Absolutely, and I didn't even, that should just be made clear every time there's a change in the council, I think, because. Yeah, that should be, we could even just, as a, as a policy that we choose to adopt. Send things to Dave and if he says, no, I don't know the answer to this. But it might be something quick that he can solve, then he'll send it on, but if not. Then Dave could refer it here, I, you know, I'm fine with something informal like that, but I just don't want to. Handcuff the council and, and its policies, I think.
Any more, Councilman Beer?
Well, can you just refer to that as, uh, uh, questions that would require outside legal. Research by Tom during a council meeting. And then anything outside of council times, just to, if they want, if a council person wants a legal opinion. To approach Dave, being the city manager, because he represents us all, so. You could kind of, or whether it be a committee, want a legal opinion on something. Just to have, uh, give it to Dave and let him pursue the legal advice on that standpoint.
That's what I do anyways, but.
If, if I may, and I'm okay with that process, it's just that, um, we all just need to be cognizant of it. Because when, when I get informed of a, an opinion by the city attorney. Um, and it didn't come through me, you know, I can't help shepherd that request. Um, or, um, provide the city's standpoint from it either.
Any more comment? Did we have a motion in a second, I don't remember? Yes, we did.
I, I made a motion originally on, uh, on the adoption of, uh. Getting a majority of council, what Will was talking about.
Okay.
But can we do a? An amendment that did that, like what I was just saying, as far as non-council times to refer any legal questions through David?
Or maybe if a council member asks, sends Tom a correspondence, Tom could just be a good fella and be like. We gotta copy the city manager on this. Well, let's just do that. Fair, guys? Okay. We'll move into new business, item B, employee handbook update. Dave?
Yep, thank you, Mayor, um, this was another item that the O N G had, committee had discussed, um, we had a situation. Um, in, in particular, this was at the B P U where one of the board members had a relative that worked. Uh, had, had a relative that worked for the B P U and that board member. Was, um, in this particular case, um, being considered by the rest of the board for the chair position. Um, the B P U board discussed it and in that case, um, also had the city attorney review the city's current, uh, policy. And the city attorney had made some recommendations on changes to that, which would incorporate those that serve on boards. Um, and I think this one is actually highlighted in your packet. And then there's a clean, clean copy, so the, the blue part was adjusted by the city attorney. To accomplish the goal that I just spoke of, uh, with O N G. Uh, is to prevent any, um, conflict of interest through personal relationships. Uh, and, and in particular, um, so I work with the chairs of the board or the mayor. Um, and in ca- in some cases need to discuss personnel matters, which then in this particular case could have been with someone's, uh. Family member and to prevent any conflict there. Um, this would, uh, in, in the B P U's business, um. Setup, they have a personnel committee, so it, it would require the chair not, in this case, not to be on the personnel committee. And, um, he is not on the, that committee, it's two other members of the board, um, to prevent any conflict there.
Okay, any questions for Dave about this one? Sounds pretty cut and dry, Josh?
This applies only to employees on city boards? Or all city employees?
This, this would apply to this, this policy applies to all city employees, but the amendment. Um, came about because we had a, a, a board member. Who in effect kind of helps with personnel matters, uh, or at least discussions of them. Uh, had a, a conflict with a family member.
Okay, so, but board members are not employees except for B P U?
Well, the B P U board members are considered employees, you're correct. But this doesn't necessarily, uh, this would apply to employees or just volunteer board members alike, if they had family members.
So it does apply to the whole city, okay.
If they had family members that were employed by the city?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it only deals with them not sitting on the, a personnel committee of that board.
Yeah.
If they have an employee that works for them.
That makes sense. Sounds like a good policy. Any more questions? Uh, do I have a motion? Do we need to?
But just one question that, but it also includes if you're dating someone, right?
Yeah, that's probably best. Do? Do we need a motion, do we need to do anything, this seems like it's information?
Well, we need to, um, just a motion to, uh. Amend the, the personnel relationships in the workplace policy.
Okay. Okay, got it, got it. Motion, do I have a second?
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Beer, all in favor? Any opposed? The eyes have it? All right, we'll move into new business, item C, Transportation Alternative Program Grant Resolution, Alan.
So back in, well, actually it goes all the way back to two thousand fifteen. When, uh, TIFPA had a placemaking study done to, um. To actually find out where to put bike racks is how that all started. But one of the things that came out of that placemaking study was to, um, to improve economic development. And to improve pedestrian safety in the downtown was to do what is referred to as a traffic calming of M ninety-nine. Or the slang term is a road diet, which would be to reduce, um, the four lanes of traffic. Down to a dedicated left turn lane and then a, uh, single northbound and a single southbound. So it would help slow traffic. Um, and it would also improve, uh, pedestrian safety in crossing M ninety-nine. Plus it would also give the opportunity to include bike ra- uh, bike lanes through the, through the downtown. Which is something that has been, um, has been asked off and on by bicycle groups that come through the city on occasion, so. Uh. One of the things that has to happen before that can even, can even be is that there has to be a traffic study performed. You approved the cost of that traffic study back in two, back in twenty twenty-three. Traffic study is complete, it does, um, it does, uh. The, the traffic study does indicate that, uh, there would be no, um, there would be no adverse effect to traffic through the downtown to do so. And, um, there are some things that, uh, M dot and the city, uh, suggested. To improve a few of the intersections that would also increase safety and reduce, uh, distractions at some of the city intersections. Um, all of this is in conjunction with a twenty twenty-six M dot project. Which saves the city a substantial amount of money. Uh, but there are some, uh, some of the intersection, uh. Um, uh, revisions would obviously cost money. And there is a grant available, which is called the TAB grant or the Transportation Alternative Program. Um, but in, that would cover, uh, that would cover the majority of the, that expense. With, uh, twenty percent contribution from the city and, um, and TIFPA since it's part of the TIFPA district. Uh, and then, uh, and so those numbers are in this TAB grant. But, uh, we need a resolution for me to even submit the application. So that's what this is.
Sounds like a good idea, anybody got any questions?
I just want.
Yes, sir.
So it starts from here, City Hall goes past the, uh, fairgrounds?
Yes. Yes, from Steenberg to Carlton, yes.
Any more questions? Motion to pr- approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stuschel, seconded by Councilman Beer to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Any po- opposed? Okay, the eyes have it? Thank you, Alan. We'll move into new business, item D, International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Two Fourteen, David.
Thank you, Mayor, um, this item is actually, um, for council's consideration to approve the, uh, updated, uh, contract. Um, with our Teamsters Local Two Fourteen that will run from July first, uh, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Um, in your summary, I kind of highlighted, uh, some of the major changes. Um, and, and keep in mind, this is kind of a give and take, you negotiate for your increases. Um, but also the things that, uh. The city and the, uh, union group find important and you meet somewhere in the middle. This is, um, those are the, the main points of the updated contract. And I think the contract with its highlights are, uh, included in your packet. And there will be, um, there are three other union groups that would be coming forward in our next meeting or two. That would be the police officers, the firefighters and, uh, the, uh, I B W, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Uh, which is the. This is the street department, yes, so the I B W is the B P U. Any questions for city manager?
Uh, is duty day given or is that being negotiated?
That, that was negotiated, um, the county provides for it and the banks and that was something that.
Yeah, between, just a question, between holiday pay or holidays, which are thirteen, vacation is sick time. I'm at a, what, I think you get about two hundred and sixty working day if you just worked every day.
Yes.
What does that all total up to between vacations, holiday, I mean, yeah, vacation, holiday and sick time?
Yeah, it would depend on workers, you know, we did go.
Your top senior person, you're a top senior person. So you're getting over a month off?
Uh. Your top senior person probably gets, uh, there are some where they get four to five weeks vacation. Um, plus sick time, plus personal days, so that's two months.
Yeah, it's, okay, not bad. No, not bad at all, not bad at all, we'll see.
But, but that's where we, where we stand. Um, we did go to, uh, just to, for those who might not have been here, um, for all new hires. Um, with the previous contract, we went to P T O. So all your vacation, sick and personal time are combined. And the payouts on that were reduced.
Is, is there any consideration for a cap on vacation time for new employees coming in, so you, or does everybody coming in still get up to fi- five weeks?
Oh, they're, they're, it's phased in, yes, five weeks, I, I don't think.
No, I'm talking about lowering the cap, so if we hire a new employee today, instead of giving you a week's vacation and two weeks and work it up, giving you three weeks, we're out of the gate. And it doesn't, and it goes up to four no more, something like, like that.
Uh, yes, with the P T O, it's, it starts off, um, all combined.
Yeah.
Um, like a hundred and twenty hours or a hundred and sixty hours depending and then caps out at.
Okay, okay.
A point, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I worked at Hillsdale Tool, I had five weeks vacation, I had twelve holidays, so I had over a month off too. But I know it, but these people do a hell of a good job, these are our street workers. I want to cater to them and whatever they do, because I want to keep them happy, because they do do a good job and Jason's got a good crew out there. Yeah. Well, so what do you want to do, do you want to cut? So that's my business, but don't you make it sound like that's the only ones that ever gets all this vacation time? I'm just saying that they've earned it, that's my point. If you don't want to approve it, don't, then no, that's your, that's your obligation.
It's higher to five years, four weeks, five to fifteen years, five, fifteen or more, six. Uh, is that right, that's what Article thirty-nine says on page one twenty-nine?
So the, the P T O you're referring to?
Yeah, so. Uh, upon higher to five years, it's a hundred and sixty hours, now that's vacation, sick time, personal. Uh, so that would be four weeks for all that stuff and then it would go up to five weeks, yeah. That's all those things combined, yes, but if you look at the old, uh, and, and there's a different schedule for how that can be carried over. As opposed to the older, uh, employees which had a different structure.
Another hard question.
Sure.
Is city manager leadership doing anything to, on your end, to say, we're not taking this holiday? You guys, I mean, start negotiating from a position of leadership or, or example, if you will. That, because what the union gets, gets carried on to the city, employees.
That is true.
What I'm saying is, you take the first step and says, we're not taking this much. And show them in good faith. Because we cannot continue to, to fund these kind of days off and giving top pay, top benefits. When you've got a community that's begging for good employees, I mean, you're putting a lot of pressure on businesses as well. Because they can't, you know. And anyway, I'm just asking for s- s- the city management team to maybe take. And anyway, I'm just asking for the city management team to maybe take the lead. And I was saying, cut it in half, but maybe we're not going to take June sixteenth day. We're not taking that one as an example.
Well, and, and keep in mind, um, that when you negotiate this, uh, you look at something that costs you directly. So the pay increases cost you directly. A day off, while you're not getting productivity, you're not actually paying additional for that. Um, so we look at that in, in two aspects, but I will say, as you talk about that, um, and it doesn't apply to this union group. This is our only union group that is actually over a hundred percent funded on their pension liability. So all other union groups, including me, the rest of the non-union employees, will be picking up an additional percent of their unfunded pension liability going into this year. So it's, that's, so that's, you know, you look at the adds and the, and the decreases, right? But I understand completely where you're at. And, uh, you know, uh, if council, uh, any of these decides that or determines that it, you know, uh, to vote them down and that sends us back to the drawing board. We go back to the drawing board and say, you know, council said that we, this is too much or it needs to be modified. So, otherwise, um, we've negotiated what we think is fair based on asks and what we want or what we would like to put into it. Um, like for example, for the city side, we, when people come to us and they don't have a CDL, we have to send them to training and we give them, uh, six months to get their CDL. And that, now they're costing about five thousand dollars because the states cost, state, states requesting additional training. Well, if you, you get your CDL and you leave in six months because you cannot go drive a truck, um, w- we just were out because we had no clawback provision per se. This, uh, this basically provides a clawback for anything for the first year, you pay the full amount back. Anything, if it's one to two years, you pay fifty percent back. And that was, that's one of the things we've negotiated into all the contracts. Um, so things like that, um, uniforms, they've had provided uniforms, um, where, which were from a company where we're going to more, um, you know, T-shirt type, less expensive things. That, you know, when they leave, if they can't produce that uniform, when, when you provide a service, we're paying X number of dollars and routinely we'll get, we'll get stuck. Paying for missing uniforms and things like that. So we're moving away from some of the things. So.
Kind of go on what's what Greg was saying, but the, uh, the DPS, I mean, general labor, uh, seventeen seventy three. They have some differences eighteen forty four, eighteen ninety nine. So it's not real high pay. I know what we require them to do. So, um, and they've been doing a pretty good job. Can I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Really good analogy. When I left Clemens, I had seven holidays. That was it. Seven holidays. That was it. That's why when I tool left, yeah, I felt it. I mean, that was a lot of time I had off that I had to work it back. It's called PTO. And, um, the money they're making, what Tony just mentioned, that's really not that good a pay when you look at it, honestly. In the long run, you think seventeen dollars an hour nowadays, that does not cover things. Yeah, that's just not making it like it used to be. So there's a lot in this contract. I, there's a lot of holidays and I agree with you, Greg. There's like holy smokes, there's a lot of holidays there. I mean, Veterans Day, I think that's great, but Juneteenth or thirteenth or nineteenth, that thing. And there's a few in there. I just, yeah, I just, but that's what they negotiated.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if council, yeah, if you think that that's, it's, you know, we've kind of followed the federal holidays. I know the county has, the local banks do. But if you, uh, council agrees that, I know, I, I. Councilman Palladino, did you have a question or something?
Uh, I was just gonna ask, what's the difference between operator, mechanic, general labor, driver?
Jason, do you want to come up and?
Uh, so, um, the first, there's an entry level, which is, um, um, operator is, um, someone has a full CDL. We can go out and operate everything we have. Uh, we do offer to hire individuals without CDL as well. Um, that's where their general service coming in. Once they obtain the just CDL, then they can be a, um, be a, uh, full operator. A mechanic, we, we still house that, um, in the garage area. So if they work in the garage, they get that incentive to work in the garage as well. Because it is more of a, a skill set that's needed.
Any questions for Jason? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Um, just one last thing I want to add.
Yeah.
The DP, DPS has, uh, council, a, a number of council had indicated. So, um, the Teamsters are, are somewhat, when you look at our unions and you start seeing the wage scales, uh, the Teamsters are probably the most economical for the city. Um, you know, um, from ones you will see coming up, you know, the line workers, um, and whatnot. That being said, uh, it's up to council.
Well, what do you guys think?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Stucho to approve the Teamsters Local Two fourteen union contract for the period of July first to July thirtieth. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move into the last item, uh, new business homelessness task force report and policy recommendation. Homeless Task Force members. Josiah's here, Stephanie's here and Casey's here too.
Good evening. So I am going to go ahead and allow Josiah, the primary author of our report, to start with his explanation of the report that was in your packet before you.
We start?
Yes, sir.
This was excellent. Absolutely excellent report.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work.
Yeah, this is a culmination of eighteen months of work and research. These guys did an awesome job. The ones that stuck it out. I'm very grateful.
Yeah, council, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I just want to, uh, describe the report very briefly to you and then also address some of the comments that were made and the public comment that came up. The first thing is that this report, um, is not just about throwing all of the homeless people in jail. I want to clarify that right off the bat. There are two main, um, points of strategy that we're recommending. And the first is law and order. If we want to reduce homelessness, we need to crack down on drug dealing. We need to track down, we need to crack down on sexual trafficking. And we also need to crack down on antisocial behavior, um, where you have individuals who are allowed or can get away with due to a lack of, of public safety and law enforcement and get away with antisocial behavior that, that really degrades the quality of life in our community. This, this has to be a priority. Uh, but the second part is also, um, we want to provide individuals, we want to recommend ways that individuals who want to better themselves and get off the street can do so. We want to allow, um, and encourage the city council to find solutions to get these individuals in a place where they can get off the street, get out of these dangerous environments and then improve themselves. And so we know here a lot of the entities that are doing that work in our community. Um, but we also want to make clear, um, some of the issues that have developed. You know, there's a lot of money being spent in this area on mental health and homelessness. Tens of millions of dollars that are available collectively across all of these different organizations. And we need to demand accountability. We need to have clear metrics of success. That's a key part of what the city council needs to do as we address this crisis. Um, and I also just want to make the point that, um, money is fungible, right? Dollars that are spent in one place could be spent elsewhere. It might be hard to spend them elsewhere. That money might come from the federal government, from the state. But I really want to clarify that when it matters, there is money. When it matters, there's money and there is resources, there are resources, there is money out there, um, for some of the things that have been considered priorities. And I want to pressure and to address that, those issues here and to bring out that there's work that can be done. We can put pressure at higher levels of government in order to say, we need to address this problem and, and primarily is law enforcement. I think one of the biggest things that we pulled out of the report was the extent to which all of the law enforcement individuals i- in, in the local areas are, are explaining that there's a difficulty in enforcing the law and in punishing criminals. And as long as that's the case, we're going to have, continue to have serious problems with individuals who are homeless. Um, but also who are simply involving criminal activity and oftentimes those things overlap and we need to address that.
And to clarify further, we are not saying that these problems are the homeless. These people are being victimized time and time again, when we were sitting down with individuals who are experiencing homelessness in our community. The things that were brought up to us were they are being victimized in our community. When they begin to get ahead, they are pulled back in. And oftentimes they are pulled back in because the help that is available has its hands tied with governmental red tape. We have wonderful agencies in this community that are doing a lot of good work, that are trying and are having some success. But they're not receiving the funding that they could be receiving. They're not being, they're not receiving the funding that they could be receiving in a way in which they could allocate it to actually direct services to people who desperately need them because of a lot of the red tape that they experience. And with what has happened and what we have gotten as feedback from our criminal justice community, when those systems have cracks, vulnerable people are pulled into worse outcomes.
And I want to go off, you know, one of the reasons that I got involved in this task force two years ago was because of Stocks Park. You know, I'm a father, I visit, I live near the park, I go there on a regular basis for my daughter. And I have consistently found needles, I've found knives, I've found individuals who are homeless, uh, who are getting intoxicated in the middle of the day in the park. And they consider that a good place to, to conduct those activities. Um, I've found bedding, uh, I've found trash from, from local organizations that have reached out to people who, um, are impoverished and you see, then you see trash that's in the park from these programs that are meant to help. And, and so the clear metric of success to me is when my daughter gets to enjoy Stocks Park without grown men in the middle of the day, doing drugs, getting drunk, fighting, overdosing. That to me will be a clear metric of success where we've addressed the homelessness crisis in a way that I think it needs to be addressed. And, and as Stephanie said, a lot of these individuals are being victimized. One of the cases I mentioned in this report is a young woman who's mentally deficient, who was, was sexually trafficked, um, by her family for drugs. And I think as long as we have stuff like that going on in our community, that is and should be the number one priority for all entities, all agencies and all citizens. I don't want that to be happening in my community. I don't want to see it. And it's not because I want to get rid of those people. I want to stop the individuals who are conducting that kind of activity. When we have, when we know that we have drug dealers in town, when we know that we have trap houses, when we see people who are tweaking outside the drop-in center, that's a sign that what's happening is not working. You know, there's a great encapsulating image. The Narcan vending machine at the Lifeways headquarters here in town shows us that something is profoundly wrong. When we're at the point where that's considered a normal thing and, and there's a lot that goes into this, I understand. But we really need to be more proactive. We need to put more pressure in terms of getting results and clear metrics of success out of organizations that are involved, uh, with attempting to help these individuals. You know, there's a, all kinds of Form nine nineties from the IRS online and you can go poll and see what are the top salaries? How much money is being given to these different programs? And, um, then it's a great, a great starting point to start asking questions like, how is this money being spent? You know, one of the things I included was we have the Share the Warm Shelter at fifty thousand dollars a year on their budget. And you have other organizations like the drop-in center that have a million dollar budget per year between two different centers, one in Jackson and one here. And that raises questions, especially about the efficacy of these programs. Where is this money going? How is it being used? And why is it that this isn't working? Like, if you have people tweaking outside of a place that's designed to get them to stop being addicts or to try to get them out of addiction, that's a problem. It's just a problem and we have to confront it. We have to confront it head on. You know, and, and that's the leading reason that I'm here tonight is to just present my research, present the work of the, our whole organization and the task force. We poured a lot into this and tried to, to present solutions that could work in the future.
The other thing that we would like to address and we would like the city's assistance with addressing is the creation and the support of a full-time shelter. We have a number of organizations within the county who are currently working on housing developments for varying populations at varying income levels. Um, some of these are private entities, some of these are nonprofit agencies. But we are going to, within the next couple of years, see an increase in housing in Hillsdale County to serve different populations. We need a shelter as well. I know that that is not a terribly popular opinion. But a treatment-first shelter, a shelter which allows people to make connections to the community agencies that would be able to provide them with long-term help. A shelter that provides people with a dignified place to live. Even if it's temporary. A shelter that provides people the opportunity to get themselves cleaned up, to feel human again. And to be able to do things like go to work and fill those jobs, get the documentation that they need, which some of our agencies are working on. Missy works on very, very diligently to help people get the documentation that they need. But something that is clear-cut and fully supported with the backing of the city to be able to forward through that mission and help people get back to being productive Hillsdale citizens.
And just to, you know, the other part we have in the report is, you know, one of the things that really stood out, Stephanie told this story in, in one of our council meetings. But there was an overdose at one of the treatment facilities that we had here in the city, an overdose death. And what I do not want to see, and I don't think what the council wants to see, is to see a facility that's designed to help people get off the streets and then have drug addiction, overdose, sexual abuse happening in that kind of facility. And that's why the priority for law and order has to be there. Because there are individuals who sought help, you know, at the Share the Warm Shelter who come back repeatedly. And there are other individuals who just can't be there because of misbehavior and, or don't want to go. And so it's this two-pronged approach and, and we, we need to do both as a city. We need to have both approaches. So you show people, this is a positive, uplifting environment where you can do the things you need to do to get back on your feet and get off the streets. On the other hand, if you're going to abuse others and commit crimes, there has to be punishment. And there has to just be knowledge that this is a serious problem. I'll tell one more anecdote here. One of my neighbors in my, uh, neighborhood, uh, decided to attempt to run over one, a, a family in my neighborhood, some of my other neighbors. And this individual, uh, had just gotten off of probation. Um, he's a known drug dealer, known to law enforcement, to use that phraseology, decided to get in his truck and then run over or try and run over one of my neighbors in his own backyard. And, eh, you know, that to me encapsulates a lot of the problem. Like this guy was running a known marijuana grow operation, he's a known felon, and then he does something crazy like this. And, and luckily no one was harmed, but the point is that's the kind of individual that if you take that guy out of our community and say, you are not allowed to deal drugs, to engage in antisocial behavior, to try and kill your neighbors, the quality of life for everybody, rich and poor alike, goes up. We help those individuals who are addicts, who are prostituting themselves or being prostituted in those environments. And a lot of it just comes down to, if you run this kind of illegal activity, you're going to jail. And you're not getting out of it because there's not enough space. There's no excuses. We're going to have law and order and we're going to have a good life for all citizens in Hillsdale. And that's really the gist of our report and what we want to aim at here and to portray to the community. to the community. And so we've poured ourselves into that and, and, and we want that work to show here.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Stephanie and Josiah? I can't thank you guys enough for your work on this and, uh, I hope we're able to implement some of the policy in the report and I also hope that we are able to share the report with other communities, which I plan on doing, at least with our surrounding neighbors who are, um, you guys know I'm out a lot in other communities right now. Our neighbors are dealing with the same stuff. They are, Coldwater is dealing with stuff that is the same as here, but amplified because the population's bigger. So, I mean, I, I don't know how to, how to thank you guys. You, you stayed at this for over a year and, um, I know that, uh, it wasn't always easy and I know that it's really, uh, an easy, efforts are really easy to criticize. And I also know that people were specifically picked for the task force that had varying, uh, different ideals and different socio-economic circumstances and different political leanings. And guys all worked together and came up with something that I feel like is very productive and something that we are going to be able to use as a city. So, no questions for these guys?
I just want to say it's, it's, I mean, cause I remember the very first meeting we had, I mean, you have the passionate, we can't, these are people we can't throw out in the streets, can't arrest them all, oh, you can't let them do this. I mean, you, you split this right down the middle and you called bull shots because it is two things and how the report tells you, half the people have a drug problem, the other half have a homeless problem and we need to separate those. I mean, it was, this is excellent and I think there's some things we probably need to start talking to chief about. Maybe it's just, if there are known drug houses, maybe we just have pressure. We have a police car, police officers walking by, looking at, being, just being active and causing pressure on these people. Simple things at first.
Just to say, um, in our conversations that we had with individuals who are experiencing homelessness, um, they were numbering the drug houses here within the city limits at between five and 10. Law enforcement, when we had discussions with them, they were numbering them between six and seven. If law enforcement knows that this is happening, we need to be supporting them in stopping it. They're doing what they can, but we need to support it.
Yeah. And, and you know, Stocks Park, again, that to me is the focal point, you know? It's like, it'd be as easy as just having, if we need to have someone walk through that park on an hourly basis where it's like, hey man, you can't get drunk here in the middle of the day, that's just not going to work. There are kids here and, and this isn't a place for needles, it's not a place for knives, it's not a place to, to, to sleep. And at the same time, if we're saying, but there is going to be a place and if you say you need that, here's where it is. And you go there, you follow these rules and you want to get better, we're here to help you. But if you want to continue to misbehave, then there are punishments on the other side. And that allows us, I think, as you say, split that down the middle and you put the power to make that choice in the hands of individuals who need help. You can get help if you need it, but if you're not going to accept it or if you're going to abuse others, they just can't, we can't tolerate that. And this report tries to capture both.
That's matured.
We do have a shelter. Missy Descharden has it. She hasn't followed the rules, they do drug tests and all that, but she can only handle this so many.
Yeah.
But she's, there she's very stern and sticks their rules because I've been up there numerous times and seen the people. She does have something, but you can't help those who don't want to be helped. And that's, at least thank God we have Missy, she took the lead and we should follow her example and I know you guys are working with her, but she does need help.
We need more beds. Frankly, Missy and Penny both need more beds and they need to be able to do what they're doing with the support of the city.
And I think one easy thing that would probably cost very little, but will be very helpful is having a census of these individuals who receive help. I cannot stress just how important having record-keeping would be. Is we have a metric where we were like, this same person has been inside of a shelter on and off the last four or five years? That indicates something to us about the quality of health or something about the individual themselves that we then know about. But when we can't even estimate clearly who all is coming between all of these different organizations, it creates real problems in terms of just getting a, a grip on the program. Like is what we're doing working? And being able to say yes or no to that question, having clear metrics of success? To me, I think that's something that will really benefit the city in the long run. And it'll also help these organizations better help these individuals. And some of them are doing it at their own individual level, but when you've got so many different moving pieces and so many different organizations, that does create an issue just in terms of being able to measure success and to even define what success means. So that's, that's something the council could, I think, do pretty easily, um, of all the things we've recommended.
Any more questions, comments, Councilman Bell deal?
What's next? Are you all disbanding? Are you going to try to kick things to public safety, public services with more specific recommendations? Do you have any thoughts on that?
So, the discussion that we most recently had, um, ended with, we had a woman from Hillsdale County who passed away recently, within the last several months, who it was her wish that any donations upon her passing go to the task force. She and her family put that together and have donated that money. Our hope and what we had discussed was obviously we've submitted a report to y'all, um, and where you go with the report is now in the hands of city government. But as a group of just individual Hillsdale residents who happened to be on a committee together, um, we would like to see that money that was raised and also try to continue raising money to put her memory towards something that is actually viable. She specifically requested that she wanted it to, or her family specifically requested it, that they wanted it to go to individuals, um, who are in dire straits and helping them. So distributing that money and hopefully raising some more so we can put money where our mouth is and help support the idea of, um, supporting these shelters and supporting and enforcement to prevent further victimization of people.
Yeah, man, I could just say from, you know, a lot of that will depend on the mayor and what he wants, you know? I've always viewed that the purpose of this task force was to gather information and present it to the city council. We've done that, but part of this is, there's still going to be ongoing questions. There are more people we can talk to. You can just go up the chain and, and part of me wants to say, it, there's a lot of buck passing that happens, kind of inevitably. Well, who's actually in charge of law enforcement in the town? Is it the judge, the DA, the sheriff's department, the police? There's all these entities, there's all these organizations, there's all these rules, all these interlocking, interlocking organizations. And this isn't to cast aspersion on any one of them, but from my view, there's no harm in constantly pushing it up. If you can't solve this, show me the person who can. And then bring that person in here. And if they don't want to come, that's a data point. I mean, honestly, I'm at the point where I'd love to see the governor of the state here explaining to us how she believes law enforcement should operate at the state level. I would love to hear from the Michigan Department of Corrections, why we have child sexual predators at the jail level? Why are these individuals not within the MDOC system? I would love to hear explanations for why some of these things have occurred and why we simply can't quote unquote, solve these problems. Because I, I don't, I don't fully believe all of that. You know, Michigan historically has been a kind of a pioneer in terms of mental health care. One of the nation's first mental hospitals was founded here in the state in the 1860s. They had individuals at the time, at that period, who were living like in, in barns and silos and out in the community. You know, there's always been individuals who struggled with mental health issues, um, and with being on the fringes of society. And Michigan was a leader in getting those individuals out of the streets and into a place where they had clear rules, clear community and a clear, stable place to go. And so clearly in the 1860s and 70s, they didn't have the resources we have now and yet they were able to find solutions. And we know that this homelessness crisis is not inevitable. And, and in the, in the last 12 years that I've lived here, I've seen this problem explode. And there are national reasons for that, but there are also other reasons that are within our control. And, and knowing where each of those things goes, I think that's our ongoing task, um, both as individual citizens and then as, as a governmental body.
The task force was temporary, was always meant to be temporary. That doesn't mean that they're done completely at this point, but, um, we have something that I would probably say no other community of our size has had a group that sat down for a year and a half and looked at every single facet of the issue and all the different not-for-profits and all the different governmental agencies that deal with it. So I think we have something that we can do something productive with. I do really believe that. I do. So, um, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we've got no proclamations, no appointments, um, so we'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments three minutes. Please limit your trips to one of the podium and you may speak on whatever your heart so desires. The podium's now open.
That's Wayne Scott again. I, I read that report, that report was excellent. They did a great job on that. But I disagree with certain aspects of that. You know, as a former police officer and police chief at one time, you know, they, the police can't do everything. It takes the community to working together to, to do a lot of this. Now, let's take the, uh, drop-in center for example. I know when, this last year or so, because of me being, having that cancer and stuff, you know, I, I haven't got into certain things as much. I'm trying to get back into it more. But, you know, they used to have a thing, a law, or a rule up there that there was no smoking inside or out near where public could see it. Okay? And there were certain other things. If they're having problems up there, has anybody went in and actually talked to the people that are in charge there and, and say, hey, why is this going on out in public? Why is this, you know, we don't let, allow them to do it inside, we don't want them on the outside. Okay? They had areas for those that smoked that they could go to that wasn't seen by the public. Okay, I'm not talking about marijuana and I'm talking about cigarettes. You know, at that time, no drugs were supposed to be allowed on premises. I don't know how things have changed since then. The drop-in, or the warming center, I don't know how many of you have been up there. I know, I know if you've been to, uh, Republican meetings or something, you've seen the place, place is immaculate. They keep that place clean and, and a place is, uh, open where people can keep themselves clean and stuff. But they have some trouble, every once in a great while, somebody will come up. I remember my wife, one, and I, one time was at the Wilson, went with Wilson's Hall and we were sitting there having a party and all of a sudden here comes a guy with a gun running in there. I mean, you're going to get that wherever the public and, and where there's, uh, things happening. That could happen to anybody. Okay? The police apprehended him and he was taken out. But, you know, there's just a lot of things, you can't depend on the police to do everything. There are only a few, there are only a handful. Dave there and, and Adam, both know, you know, it's expensive to have a good police department and, and to have the right men and, and have enough men and women out there to take care of everything. So that's one thing, you know, we can't just depend on them. We got to depend on each other to police our own area sometimes too. We live in a, a city here with many people and neighbors and stuff. In the old days, we used to have, uh, neighborhood watches. Well, you know, those went flying away and, uh, you know, there, there's all kinds of things that we can do as neighbors and, and keeping an eye out for our, uh, area and be more of a help to the police instead of hindrance. You know, tho- those are the couple of things that I, I see and, and there's a couple of things there that, you know, I, I know I can do on my own a little bit. I can go talk to people, which I'm going to, and, and find out more. You know, fortunately you guys have blessed me to be on, on some of the boards, that helps for me to talk to. I'm on other boards as well. And, uh, you know, there's things out here that, uh, you know, if I can have the ability to do it, I will do it and I'll see what I can do. But now it's up to not only me, it's up to everybody here in this building and everybody that can hear this, what are you going to do? And that's the time to look at yourself. Look at yourself in the mirror.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Hello, Missy Descharden, Hillsdale Community Thrift. I don't have much of a voice, I was in the heat most of the day today, so I apologize. I just want to give you guys some statistics from around the world. I don't know how much research you guys have done, but I'm incredibly thorough when it comes to research. It has been proven in this country and other countries that criminalization of homelessness never solves the problem and it actually does not lessen the number, it actually increases. Housing first compared to criminalizing them, there is a proven statistic that criminalization only temporarily gives them housing, which then drops the number ironically, they'll count, they'll be like, oh, look, they're all in jail, so they're housed, right? And then that number drops. Well, ironically, what happens is, is when they get back out of jail, that actually becomes more difficult to find housing because now they have a record. All proven methods in this country and many other countries that have been proven time and time again, that housing first with the correct partnership with private and government-funded resources works. You know who's leading the solution to find and, and, and almost end their homelessness in the world is actually Finland. We, we could learn a lot from them, so let's start with there. They use the housing first approach, which I know it's not always against, you know, what everybody wants, right? But it, it works. Housing first works. They are more successful than any other country in the world and they have a success rate of four out of five people. Do you know who criminalizes their homelessness? Anybody? Japan. Do you know who else takes care of their homeless? China. Ironically enough, another one that actually has, um, according to the Russian constitution, the state is required to provide free permanent shelter to anyone who needs better living conditions or doesn't have a permanent registration. Now, I understand with the, with the task force report that just came out, obviously, I think it could have been written a little bit more humanizing. It could have had a little bit more in there about more detail about exactly what it meant and instead it kind of came across very harsh. And I think, you know, it, some people just needed to see the point in it, just to see the point. Criminalization though, will not work. If we can provide enough resources by private, some government, because we all agree, when the government raises their hand and they say, hi, I'm from the government and I'm here to help, that never works. The whole reason why we are in this situation is from the 1970s, when the government agreed to welfare. It created, um, moms and dads that didn't have to be married anymore. We will take care of you. Okay? But the moment that you make too much money, they'll take away your food stamps and they take away your housing voucher. Now you need to work twice as hard to get the money back that actually was assisting you. It's a system created to keep you in poverty. And the number one reason, the number one reason across the world, the reason why we have homelessness is unavailable housing. Affordable housing across the world. It's the same problem. Now, yes, there's going to be drug, drugs and alcohol and everything else, but believe it or not, there's a lot of people out there that don't use drugs, don't use alcohol, that just can't afford housing. And you know what? I got 20 of them that are on my property right now. I had to turn three away yesterday. The problem isn't going away. We need affordable housing. That is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. Any more public comment? Seeing not real close podium, Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to keep this brief. Um, just want to really thank everyone who worked on the train event this past weekend. And the Stocks Park celebration, I think the community came together and put on a number of very nice events over the weekend, particularly on Saturday. And we brought a ton of people from outside our community to our community and we put our best foot forward, um, whether it was the train event, all the businesses that supported them, from the restaurants, the food trucks, the stores, um, Mrs. Stocks Park Committee with the events they had going on all day, uh, as well as the Dawn Theater as well as the Dawn Theater participated. So it was truly a great Saturday for the community. Also, just want everybody to keep in mind, as we finish to wrap up our CDBG project, which is kind of in the Willow Marion Street area wrapping up currently. It'll probably be a couple more weeks yet. But, so we have that project going on. We have the Westwood project going on, which I just saw today that they had put down curb on the one street. Yep. And the second street, they started. So that is moving forward and looking good. And the same thing, West St. Joe is coming along, and hopefully within the next week or so, we'll have concrete there. So, and then the airport terminal project will be starting as well. So we have a lot of construction going on in the community, a lot of good, positive stuff happening, including, lastly, I'll say, our recreation programs. Michelle was telling me earlier today that by the end of the kid pitch season, we'll have had over 100 games at Field of Dreams. We've got, at the end of the month, we've got outside 12 and 10 new tournaments for the first, our first tournament of the year. In July, we're going to have our first-ever softball tournament at Field of Dreams. And then with our T-ball and coach pitch, we've already got over 230 youth signed up. So over 20 teams for T-ball and coach pitch. So we've got a lot going on with our recreation and our community support agencies like Kiwanis and others, Exchange Club, Rotary. All of them are pitching in to make the community better. And it's nice to bring them on board and work with the city to get things done. So with that, Mayor, I'll wrap that up and take any questions.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Counsel comment? Anybody have anything? Councilman Horsey?
Just a clarification. I read the homelessness report, of course, and I didn't see any language in there that criminalizes homelessness. I see language that wishes to criminalize criminal behavior, but not anything that criminalizes homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Councilman Horsey. Any thing else? Motion? Oh, Councilman Fear?
Are we going to do a meeting July 1st? Or no?
Are we scheduled for a meeting July 1st?
Yeah, the first meeting in July, we have...
Yeah, do we even have one scheduled, is what I'm asking?
We do have one scheduled. It's up to council if they would like to have it.
If we don't have much business to tend to, the week before will cancel. Yeah. Does that sound fair, or... We are, we are, but... I, I mean, yeah, we usually cancel a couple meetings a year. A lot of time from lack of business. If there's no pressing business for July 1st, then we'll cancel the meeting. Fair enough?
So if there's no packet, I don't need to worry.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.
Somebody forgot to shut the feed off.